To order, um, no, uh, Jan- January, uh, we're all some planning board meeting to order. Uh, let's see, really don't have much on the agenda, I just wanna have this more to have a discussion if there's anything that we do wanna put up for town meeting to have that, that conversation. I know last time I did mention the Blue and Mill, I did send a email to Jeff Aspie yesterday, or just a lot of this stuff, I just totally slipped my mind. Um, I haven't heard anything back, I told him it'd be a good time to attend if he wanted something to happen. Um, so I don't know if he's gonna show up, I tend to doubt it, I haven't heard anything back from him.
Didn't we clarify everything we wanted as far as definitions and descriptions and wording, we clear, we, we, over the past two years, we did all that, right?
I think we did.
I thought we did. Commercial vehicle and how many employees are escorted.
Yeah, that's been done, alright. Bless you. Uh, the outstanding issue of mobile homes, or not mobile homes, um, duplexes, do we wanna take that on?
It's still currently, it is a process of the works as we speak and sit here with duplexes being put into, you know, open space subdivisions, so. And this is January, we did have that discussion for a town meeting.
Yeah, so we have to, if we propose anything, it has to be something that would probably go for one round of public hearing and that's it. We wouldn't be able to have a second.
But it had to be something, I would think it would be one of something we discussed at the table before, I mean, 'cause.
Well, we get most of our members here.
What I remember there was some discussion at the other meeting with the Gagnum project regarding, and Mr. Krebs was here for that, regarding what we wanna allow, we thought about, you know, first time going by is with duplexes being a
Yeah.
More possibility of homeownership, so being that it's January, we're talking about what a man in March meeting, town meeting, you know, I mean.
It is, it is a fairly, it is a fairly significant discussion to have.
Yeah, it is.
Because, because on the surface, you know, I would say that I wouldn't wanna change the ordinance without a lot more thought in it. You know, I, I agree with what people, with, I think people were surprised that, you know, we allowed those in the suburban residential and countryside residential. But a number of years ago, we made that decision to, to leave that in there, and we scrubbed, we scrubbed it down to, you know, keeping multifamily out of those areas. So, we have already made movements in that direction.
And since those movements and changes, there's been no kickback on any project or any, or any town public opinion at any meeting that it was an issue?
Yeah, until.
Until, until a project that was just in the past three months.
We, we don't have all that many like that either in our town, but where Dover, Durham, Greenland, Traddell, Northampton, Seabrook. There's a lot of duplex housing that has gone in in the last five, ten years.
Duplex or condos, is it?
Uh, it, condex and duplex.
There's a difference.
Well, yeah, condos are a little higher.
Ownership too, of said land.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, I'd be open to discuss that, but I wouldn't be open to pursue that for getting on a town meeting for this year, if that's, if that's the topic you wish to discuss at the table.
As, this one will talk, yes.
To me, it makes sense that they should remain in the urban residential and the old Salmon Falls district, that makes sense to me. The, uh, country and suburban residential, those are the two areas, or at least one area, where there's been the most concern, so. And with this, the potential for the most development, so.
But I think that what would happen in most situations is that it would be, you know, if somebody was to do subdivisions in that area, I think you'd have like an eighty, ninety percent possibility that it would be single family versus a duplex. Primarily, I, I think what forced the issue on this, on the thing on Clement Road was, you know, the amount of land that was available. But then, I can throw a hole in my argument there, that, you know, a lot of what we see are these, you know, ten acre parcels that are assigned to me.
Well, that, that might be.
And that's, that's something that, yeah.
But there's certain niches that having it as existing, certain niches that it fulfills, i.e. the, you know, the, the housing, workforce housing, affordability. Uh, and also, in the bigger picture, you know, taxes go down when there's more money coming to the town, so development of some of the land does lead to increased revenue. And, and, you know, you will not hear me complain if my tax bill goes down or even stays same for one year, 'cause it, you know.
Guys, what do you think?
I think I can see both sides, honestly, it's, I think to some degree inevitable that you see these ten acre parcel and someone's gonna try to squeeze as much as they can out of it, and why wouldn't they? I do wonder, let's take Clement Road for example, if he put a four bedroom house instead of a duplex, I don't think he's getting that much more out of a duplex. If he's renting them, yeah, he has, um, I mean, this is all hypothetical, it's already baked in. I, I would love to hear at a public meeting what people think, I would be upset if the parcel next to me got developed with a bunch of duplexes. I live next to a field, so, that would upset me, but what can you do about it, I don't know. I don't know if that adds anything to the conversation, but.
Well, what you, what you could do, and I mean, you could put protective restrictions in, if you don't wanna see that type of development, that's what, that's one of the reasons this planning board, all planning boards exist, is to develop, you know, the controls for, for development and the community.
So, right now, they're allowed in the village and?
Allowed, uh, basically, yeah.
Two zones definitely have the most concern, don't you imagine, Joe?
And, uh, suburban.
But there being two sides to every story, you know, the person that came into that parcel and beside you, if that was you, you should have every right to, for your investment, have it be profitable. Absolutely, abiding by laws, abiding by current rules, and I just think that, yeah, you brought up a good point that I was gonna bring up, is that I would need, I mean, public town hearings, I'd have to get the public set.
They're permitted on all.
The other, the other thing to think about is that with the accessory dwelling laws that we have, basically, every single family home is a duplex.
Could be.
You know, it theoretically can be.
In-law.
Yep, well, it's not, it's not really an in-law, you know, it's an accessory dwelling, you can't sit down and say, you know, you're gonna have grandma live in that unit, you can't do that. It has to be, you know, it's, it could be rented out as, you know, a separate space, as an Airbnb space, it could be, you know, a college student, it could be, you know, whatever. But, you know, the way.
We're dealing again with Airbnbs, but.
Yeah, but, but, but the way that we wrote the regulations is that somebody would have to be very, very trustful on that individual that's living in that, that unit, because there has to be a door between the two. So, that makes it, you know, a little less.
It's not safe to say that every single family home can, 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 certainly, if the structure has to satisfy.
Be interested in trying to get one in my house.
But the door is wide open now, whereas before the money had cracked. The other, um, what else popped out of my mind? Well, actually, accessory dwelling units, we're, we're safe there.
We're safe there, there was some changes within state law that came about, I guess, you have to allow them, that's really what it comes down to. That by, by state law, you're supposed to allow accessory dwelling units, and I don't think, I don't think our restrictions are deep enough to.
No, in fact, um, excuse me, the municipal associations, they, they thought we were in good shape.
Can I get a question out about these duplexes, I mean, do any of you think that, like, creating ordinance against them in certain areas of the town is gonna strike some people as prejudicial? Because we're assuming certain types of people are gonna be renting in duplexes, and it's sort of like, I mean, I somehow got the feeling a little bit with the permanent thing, it was like, not my bad.
Yeah, oh, no, like, alright, they agree.
Which I felt was a little bit, I mean, people, it's definitely an issue, I think, like.
That's what happens every time you propose something, you gotta change.
Yeah, not my bad, yeah, but, I mean, to me, it's not so much, it's not the, the type of people renting it, 'cause, I mean, I live in the old Salmon Falls district, I'm surrounded by people that would never be able to afford a duplex, so.
I know, that really mean.
So, it's not that, it's, it's, if you're, if, if what you want for existing housing stock is a certain type in certain parts of town.
But I think that you think that way, I think that other people might think another way. I think that's, I think that's a very, I think that's a very, like, high minded way to think about it, and, but I think that there are other, I see other aspects saying you can't do that.
Right, but to take into all of the, so, the resources of the water and the road usage and, those are the things. I, I mean, frankly, he could've probably squeezed in seven houses back there, I don't, probably not, I don't know, but like, um, I don't think it's the density, it's more like, we need to be mindful of the character of the town, I don't know if that makes any sense, and, and how we.
I don't think we're gonna get to an answer on this, and see.
Oh, I wanted to bring it up because we had a.
No, no, and I, and I, I think you folks next, next year will have to have that, that discussion with Mr. Krebs, and, you know, do you sit down and say that, you know, that you can only do condos, you know, but they're individually owned, I don't think he can do that, but, um, those types of issues, so.
I just think some, some forethought should be placed on the fact that every time someone proposes a plan, as an example, we're gonna put condex, we're gonna put duplexes in this area, and then the planning board is, is bored behind that, says, okay, you gotta wait with that one, whatever.
Yes, it's reactive.
And then, and I see what you're saying as well about people judge, but I mean, you know, we're not all high minded, or, you know, take the high road. But I, I think that every time a, a program is, or a big development is proposed, it could be argued that it's followed up at the next town meeting with changes so that we've got that one, but we're not gonna allow that anymore, probably like our taxes to go down, it just, you know, I think that needs to be looked at, because I can see that becoming, it's, it's, like you said, it's nothing that's gonna be solved tonight, though.
Those are the two things I thought you'd talk about.
Jeff is here.
Yeah, sorry, I'm late.
So, why don't you come on up and let's talk about the mill.
Okay, yeah.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, come on up.
Sit up.
We have a chair.
Look at the table here.
So, what's, so this is really the first time you come in front of the official board.
So, can you just state your name?
Yeah, my name's Jeff Aspie, and I'm running the, the, you know, as they call it.
I think it's technically how to get your address.
It is, Five Chauncey Creek Road. Five Chauncey Creek Road, in Kidney Point, Maine.
So, I invited you here this evening because we're coming up on the town meeting, it's getting really tight on schedule and stuff, and we wanna kinda see if there's any changes that you're looking for.
Okay, so what are you voting on at the town meeting?
Uh, changes to the zoning ordinances.
Okay.
So, as it stands, so, what, 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 let's talk, let's go this direction, what, what's your current thinking with the building?
Well, I'm not sure yet, actually, I'm kinda like in the crossroads, 'cause we're gonna be, we're still kinda tearing it apart and rebuilding the infrastructure, so basically, you know, I'm estimating like late spring maybe, we gotta make a decision, you know, 'cause right now, we're doing stuff that we have to do anyways. Uh, and then we gotta make a decision if we're gonna try to go mixed use, or if we're just gonna stay, you know, commercial the way it is now. So, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we're gonna have to, I have been looking at it, like, weighing it, you know, if I wanna do a little bit of residential, again, I don't think it would ever be a hundred percent residential, 'cause I don't think it's conducive to that.
And I don't, I don't like want that.
Now, there are restrictions right there, so.
Right now, there is, yeah.
Right, so.
I think right now, I can only do like.
Six.
Four apart, six, yeah.
Six is a lot, I mean.
And I would never do just six, because it's not, because of the code stuff, like, if I'm gonna make, yeah, egress upgrades and stuff like that, I would need more density, you know what I mean, so.
But you haven't committed to any development path yet, you still have all your options open, you're just doing the necessary things regardless of which direction you go, that's how I understand it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I own it, so I gotta, you know, if I don't get, if I didn't have, like, you know, zoning that worked for what I wanted to do, then I would just do what I could do. You know, 'cause I'm not, I'm already in it, I'm not.
So, let's say that you were, you were to, that you wanted to put in more residential units, why wouldn't you be coming in with a plan like that?
Well, obviously.
Are you talking?
I'm not gonna invest in a plan until I know I have the zoning, because that's, yeah, that'd cost money. So, um, so I, I mean, I still, I'm, I'm still on a good path, because I still am doing the upgrades that I need to do. And then, I could, you know, if I made a decision based on, uh, you know, the use, you know, 'cause at that point, I'm committed, I would have to, I'm all in, so then I would probably build it around pretty quick, like, I could turn a plan around, 'cause I would actually only need a sketch plan to come in for you guys, I wouldn't need a fully engineered plan, I think.
Uh, you would.
Well, eventually.
Like, yeah, yeah, I think for, for more consultation purposes, yeah, you don't need, but once you're, once you're going into the full process, you're, you're gonna need to do full site plan, comply and break.
Yeah, for the final approval, you get a full site, a completed site plan.
When, when we talked, we, I believe we had talked in January, it was you, me, Mike, and I think you, Mike and I kinda came off and we was like, gee, we should've put this zone in with the same regulations as we did with the mill, which was, I think, believed fifty percent.
So, that's just from, uh, the, whatever, that commercial street down to the river?
Yeah.
Okay, I see. Is that?
Just to mill building.
Just, yeah. Right, yeah, that little strip right there on the river. And, uh, so that's done, right?
That's not done.
Oh, it's not now?
Well, okay.
The zoning is completed.
Oh, it is, well. For, for the mills.
Yeah, it still may need some tinkering, but, for the most part, that's completed.
That is done, okay.
It's, it's the, you're a little stretched there that isn't, so.
Right, does that go council that, to give that?
That would come before, that would have to go, that would have to come as a recommendation out of this board and go to town meeting as a.
Okay, so it'll get the Salmon Falls down, that's what, that's the same process now?
Yes.
So, where you are, you're in C one?
Yeah, C one, we're just thinking there are two buildings, or three buildings between you and, and Front Street. One.
It's just one there?
Just one, yeah, and it's actually owned by Brian.
Right, 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 so it's just that one, that's the two now.
Yeah, this is apartment building. So. And then, and then my other butters are across the street, obviously, and then I got, you know, there's, you know, some residential on the other side, I don't know if you count the other side of the tracks, those butters?
Yes.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I would be.
Okay, so behind me.
Yeah, but, but, but we're, it's really more than, oh, right.
Trying to figure out a way to carve out.
That's yours? Well, it looks like mine's.
Oh, without.
I don't, I didn't find anything. Oh, you know something?
Which we already have. Which, well, which we already have, but the mill just, in my opinion, is fine, so.
A lot of laptop. Yeah, well, if you can word it like, mill, then it doesn't seem like squat zone, it seems like mill zone, but I don't know how that works. But I hate to have you, wait, you threw that, wasn't even gonna do it, and, so.
A lot of folks would, I'm gonna say a lot, quite a few people that I've spoken to would like to see a commercial on the ground, and it's your property, obviously, you can do with it, what's permissible, what you wanted to. But what would like to see happen is commercial on the ground, but I think you've mentioned this too, a restaurant, bar type thing, or storefront, or industrial commercial, like you have now, and some residential upstairs.
Yeah, I would do, that's exactly, yeah.
Larger loft type.
Yeah, in fact, with the plan, the preliminary plan that we were talking about is the commercial is on, you know, the parking lot that's there now, on the street, would be the commercial portion, the, and those two floors would be commercial. So, that way, if you park there, you only gotta walk up one flight of stairs per commercial, and then the residential would be the top three floors, and then maybe the third floor, and that would be access, 'cause it's six floors. So, the residential would be access from the back.
Right.
And then, part of the commercial could be access for the back, so that you only had one flight of stairs. So, basically, at any one time, nobody is gonna walk up more than three flights of stairs, 'cause if you, if you go in that building right now, on the ground floor, it's six flights of stairs. It's ridiculous.
There's no elevator?
There's a freight elevator, there's no passenger elevator, so it really, like, I have to configure it so that people can get in and out of it easier. It doesn't make any sense right now, like, you know, it wa, it wasn't built for, uh, I guess, utility, it was built just for practicality, like, people were working in there, very head and saying the matter.
So, like a mill.
Yeah, like child labors, and run up downstairs real easy, you know, but, yeah, it's just not good, so I, if I split it that way, I think it would actually be much more functional. And, uh, you know, then you'd get the commercial activity on the street. And I usually do mixed use, actually, all my other projects have been mixed use, because I like to do that, um, for the mix and.
Do projects, Fort Smith, that we told you before, Fort Smith Dover?
Uh, I've got Greenland, I got some in Greenland, I got some in Kidney, kind of that area.
What, what, so maybe we, we might know what projects you worked on, just so we can get an idea.
Uh, well, probably nothing as big as this, like, the biggest one I have is probably like fifteen thousand square feet, and this one's forty, so they're smaller.
Okay, but they're still mixed use?
Yeah.
Properties?
They're all mixed use, so I have like, um, one of them's got like eight commercial units, four residential, the other one's got like seven commercial units, and I got six residential. So, it works pretty well, um, I don't know why they did that, I, oh, you know what, it's probably because of zoning, actually, when I think about it. It's probably the limitations of doing a large scale project, because, you know, residential, parking plus an entrance, and then the commercial, you have intensive parking, but then residential's, a lot of times, more code intensive or things like that, and then, so you can kinda like balance it based on the site. I don't think I have too many parking lots over there.
Here, I couldn't have, I couldn't use the back.
Yeah, but I have other limitations, I think, that, so I, I, I think if I mixed, um, you know, I, I gotta look at it, obviously, it, it just comes down to the, the money, but, as it always does, but.
It's an option, it's a. I, I guess what, what my thinking is, is to apply the changes that we've made to the mill district, to the C one district.
What's involved in doing that?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, this is the only building that qualifies for this type thing in the C one district, so we'd only apply to this building, which we satisfied, what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
'Cause this is the only struct, existing structure that.
I can't see it on this map, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that would, that would accomplish, give them a more flexibility, I mean, to maximize, you know, the revenue on the project.
I'm just trying to get the language.
Yeah, the other good thing is, if I did apartments, they would be small one bedrooms.
Okay, so.
They all one bedrooms or studios?
Here, here's, here's what, what we did, okay, of the rawest of zoning laws that allow residential units in the mill district, and what we would do is we'd change the language around to the C one districts. Uh, residential uses would be allowed by special exception, with no more than two bedrooms per unit, with two dedicated parking spaces allocated per unit. Residential units would not be allowed on the ground and basement floors of the mill building, which they are meant to be maintained for commercial, which are meant to be maintained for commercial units, uses, in order to create mixture uses in the district.
It would still be a special, they still would have to go through.
Still have to go through a special, residential units would be allowed by, by special exception.
Which gives you your control back.
Exactly.
But at, at least someone can come and project, and propose a plan in front of us. And that's what we did, and it's just changing the, the zone.
What's the density right now in the way we structured the mill, the mill zone?
Well, there's no real, we, we don't talk about this.
Okay, there's no density.
We, we talk about, you know, that, that would only be allowed by special exception, no more than two bedrooms per unit with two dedicated parking spaces allocated.
Okay, so the only limitation would be parking at that point necessarily?
Yeah, and then you can't put anything on, on the ground floor and basement.
Right, right, totally, but in that case, I got, not that I would ever do it, but I got five other floors to work with, I wouldn't, I think the max I would ever do is four floors, I think a more, maybe three floors, just split it right in half. Half of the resi and half of the commercial, that's, that's where we're kinda, the direction we're heading in, if we're having that conversation.
So, do we wanna do that?
I think that's a no brainer.
It's no different than how we rolled it out, any other, any abutting zone.
And it's still gonna be up to the town, a town meeting to make a decision, sir.
So, Mike, can you look at your email, unless on the schedule?
Yes, I can.
Commercial and industrial, you know?
Yeah, the nice part about it is there'll be less studios, basically, you know, like a bunch, that's what everybody wants now, they just want smaller spaces.
Yeah.
And, uh, it doesn't attract, you know, large families, and it's just more for, you know, maybe somebody with one child, that would be the maximum, 'cause it's a one bedroom. So, it's kinda like efficient, you know, probably, I think in like seven minutes worth of, of, it's autonomous, and that's how people wanna live now.
How much parking do you have there?
I think I hit it up, I get that whole back lot.
I've never been a back to the.
Drive back there, there's a bunch of solar panels down there.
Did you do the solar panels too?
Yeah, we did those things already, yeah, that's get, that's getting. Still, in front of, between the, between the building, you'll see there's, it's a, it's a large area.
Yeah.
You know, I would probably have to pay to get the drainage down.
How do you even get back there?
Railroad out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I saw a little picture, that used to be.
Okay, so.
Train station.
The train station, yeah.
Did you see that in the picture?
No.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, it's cool, I should bring it in.
So, we have to have a public hearing by the twenty-sixth, and it has to go through on one meeting. Oh, no, no, February sixth.
So, do you do that at our regular February meeting?
Yes, oh, that's the way everything is.
Uh, it'd have to be earlier, 'cause our next meeting is the second.
The seventh, the, uh, sixth is.
It's Monday.
Is a Monday. Do it the week before. And I'll see if I can get SRPC to come in there.
Thirty-first? And we want the thirty-first?
I guess.
Or do you wanna do the twenty-fourth, just in case we need to have a?
Another day?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean.
Yeah, okay. So I got, you have to notice in the paper by.
Seventeen.
By seventeen? Ten days.
For the town.
Don't take too much trouble.
Uh, it's only eight, so, so you need to, um.
By this weekend? It's gonna be easy to do, because I just, I just sit down and change it to, from.
It has to be by the twelfth.
By the twelfth?
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to add the C one district to the same restrictions as we applied to the Mill District for last year's town meeting, and that would be forwarded to a public hearing on January twenty-fourth. Yeah, no, no problem.
I'll make that.
Okay, but look, the, the motion is, is that we will hold a public hearing on a zoning change to apply the changes that we made to last year's town, uh, last year's, um, town meeting recommendations on residential uses in the Mill Dist- in, in the Mill District to the C one district. That we hold a public hearing on it on July twenty-fourth. With the purpose of sending it to tw- uh, yeah, January, apologize. Uh, with the intention to forward that to the voters for March town meeting. And I was worried it was not. You can get close on that.
Vision of a public hearing.
Supper P M. And then I use some fucking guy in Denver, I guess, too. Yeah. Maybe. Yeah. It depends on what we get going on for this, and so, I almost canceled this thing to tell the truth. All right, so I have a motion, looking for a second. All those with favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, so come to our meeting on the twenty-fourth, please.
Okay, twenty-fourth of January?
Yeah.
Okay. And what transpires with that?
That's gonna be a public hearing on this proposal, on this proposed amendment.
Okay, brought by the planning board?
Brought by the planning board.
Okay.
That's gonna be put to the voters, we have to, at that point in time, we need to take a vote on it, the A and A, you know, listen to public input, you know, whatever we will get, and.
Okay, so I don't need to answer any questions?
No, no, I just, I just want you to be around as, as, as the primarily affected party.
Right.
So.
There you go, there's no application.
Yep, yeah.
Sounds great.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I haven't gotten any place with, uh, on Suzanne's pet project.
Water?
Yeah.
I supposed to ask her about that?
Yeah, I know, you asked.
Okay.
And I go in and. So I'm gonna, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to SRPC and see if I can get them to come to that meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Just gonna suggest that, maybe we can piggyback?
Yep.
That'd be great.
Yep. Yep, so.
So that will be my answer, and it will be that we're tempted to piggyback on the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
And a hearing that evening.
Yep, okay, because I get you out of it. So I'm not gonna be, so I won't be on, on the, uh. That's great, I like being on the list.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
So your meeting is gonna be on the twenty-fourth of January?
Twenty-fourth, yes.
Because I know that I'll be in Florida.
Good God!
It's, I, I just bringing that stuff down with me, that my family has.
Do we currently know pending items or foreseeable items to see coming up in February?
No.
Or March?
No. So there's a possibility, you know, we're not gonna be meeting a whole lot. Which comes to my next issue, okay? I would really like to know who I'm handing off the reins to. So, you know, you guys are gonna have, you know, I don't know what's gonna, when am I done? Big, March what?
Town meeting.
Town meeting day, so I guess I will be at the, I guess I will be running the March Planning Board meeting.
Yes, you would be either reappointed or replaced.
Sounds good to be replaced, I like that, I like that.
Interesting, but the meeting after town.
Appreciate your service and many years.
Yeah, I know. But I wanna go away.
We're not forcing them out.
I wanna, I wanna go, but, you know, in, in all seriousness, so, you know, we, you guys have gotta come down to a conclusion, you know, you need to decide whether or not you're sticking around or not, and then the rest of you need to figure out who's gonna be, you know, the next chair. So I can hand this stuff off to people and start coordinating out, you know, this transition. Because I just don't wanna sit down and cut the cord, you know, I, I'll be, I'll be more than happy to, you know, serve as a, as an alternate. You know, but I'm not gonna show up for about six months, because you guys have gotta get your own feet.
So it's, 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 it's U P A and U P A for re nomination?
Yes.
And the executive cannot be the chair.
That's correct.
Executive's not interested in anything.
So, so right now, who can be the chair is Miles, John, yourself, if you stick around, okay? If you don't stick around, Patrick will probably become full member, he'll probably take my place, okay? So it's gonna be amongst you guys.
Is, is the.
Or, or alternates.
Glenn's an alternate as well.
Glenn's.
No, because I'm gonna stay in all that.
Yes, yeah.
And.
And we'll be. So we'll be appointing another member as well.
One member, yeah. So I would suspect that Pat- uh, Jeff, Glenn doesn't wanna go off to be a full member.
Right.
Okay? Patrick, you gonna be interested in becoming a full member?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Chair.
So. It, it, you know, the, you know, the one thing to keep in mind is that.
Oh, I'm not thinking Patrick.
The one, the, the, the one thing to keep in mind as to who, whoever's gonna do it is, John's very, very good to work with. You know, myself, I don't bother John a lot, because I've done this for a while, you know, both in, in other communities and here, so it's like, it, it's not that, I really don't push on him. Uh, but, you know, he's gonna be available, I know that you guys are gonna be talking to him to be as a little bit more active role.
We're trying to decide, he's gonna be coming before the board. Looking plans or email tech. But he's gonna come and discuss what he'd like to see happen, what we'd like to see happen, and see if it works for, for, for both of us. Um, there's also been some conversations with Stratton Regional Planning, they offer some of the same services that Mr. Krebs offers. They have given us a proposal, um, so, I mean, there are different options. So if John decides this isn't what he did to you at that level? I mean.
I will, I, I, I will say, on SRPC, okay? We did it once before, and it did not work out.
Okay, well, that's good job.
Okay, uh, we had a person by the name of Jerry Milroy, who was the, kind of like the contract planner.
Yep.
And one of the things that I found just really highly irritable about the entire situation was that he didn't listen to what we were saying. It was very, it was very, it was a very, very agenda-driven, you know, outlook that, that they were doing, that was coming from SRPC.
Right.
You know, it was like, the, the attitude was, well, what happens if all this line gets developed? You know, and it's like, okay, it hasn't happened in three hundred years. All right, so how do you expect it to, so, well, it could happen, you know, I, I don't, I don't deal with those type of, of individuals. So, you know, I think you, you need to be very, very careful as, as to a person that is advising you and guiding you, then trying to, to drive it.
Sure.
Because, because really, you guys, as the board, are people that should be pushing, pushing the vision, and then the planner should implement it.
Yeah.
So. All right. So, so is, so, so is, so is anybody interested in becoming the chair?
Let me say, I think, I think Miles should be the chair.
Why would you say that?
Why would you say that? Because I've heard that you have experience with boards.
Yeah.
You have boards. The biggest problem I have is, is sort of representative of why I'm late tonight, and I apologize, is I'm a, I'm a sole employee in my law firm, I mean, I have a part-time employee, but I am in, I have the manufacturing line, I have the advertising, I'm the billing, I'm, and.
I know, it's a Fortune seventy-five company.
I know, you're right. Okay, oh, I'm not pushing you, but, but I'm saying, if, if, if you're hesitant, because you think, I, I just say that, I don't know if I could commit to it, and, so I don't wanna be presumptuous, but.
Yep.
Um, I've, you know, I guess I'm just throwing out there, so forgive me if you took offense to me suggesting you should be the chair.
Um, so, uh, in full disclosure, I'm planning to run again for the finance committee, budget committee. Which I don't think I would be able to do both, planning and budget, but that election hasn't happened yet. Uh, no, no, like.
Oh, 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 legally, okay.
I, I'm still twain with this idea, um, but I need to decide.
You have more power as a planning board chair.
Right.
You have your own office.
There's no heat. I'm just throwing that out there for you, anyways.
That's the whole thing.
Um, well.
I just, I wanted to start some discussion, so that.
Yeah.
I, you know, I apologize.
Well.
Inappropriate.
I don't think it's inappropriate, I think we need to, I mean, there's, there's only three of us that conserve, and I'm, I'm, I'm not getting the sense that you're.
No. Jumping.
So.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If, if you need someone to, to chair and run a meeting, I don't know the regulations like you do.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
The, the, the one, the, the one concern that I would have is that I, I, I think you could, that you would be able to run an excellent meeting, you've done it before, you know, it's, it, it's just being open-minded, and, you know, trying to make sure that all sides are being heard, you know? There, there is a level of, you get these emails from people.
Right.
And you respond to them, and that triggers more reviews, and more.
Yeah, I've read that you know.
And, and sometimes, and, and sometimes you just, you're just gonna sit down and say, that's it. You know, this is the way it is, this is how it's going down in the discussion. You don't like it, you know, hire a lawyer the next day. Um, now, the thing is, is that if you guys are gonna be relying on, on Mr. Krebs to do that, or SRPC, you know, that's.
Right.
That, that, that's the other.
And that, and we're very cognizant of the fact that we will not have a chair that has multiple years of experience, perhaps, on, on the board.
Right.
I got the feeling the last time we talked to him, he wasn't really interested, so.
No.
Um, but if you were, that'd be fine, but, but we, we understand that there's, there's gotta be that level, that need of sort of extra attention, and have budget accorded.
Yes.
So.
You could've done it by giving me a hundred bucks a month, I wouldn't let people on.
Hundred bucks a month?
Yeah.
That's it?
I told you that.
I'll just actually check it out, that's what I'm wanting.
I told you that. So. But. You know, it's just some, I, I guess you guys, I, I, I just, by that March meeting, I wanna know who, who I'm, who I'm gonna be handing off these keys to. So.
Clock is ticking, you know, I think. Are, are we short on members?
No, no.
We use the whole.
We were just hoping.
We use the required.
Yeah, we.
There's five.
Five members.
It was seven, we pulled it down.
It was a matter of making quorums.
Yes.
Yeah. And we were having a real.
You need four people to have a meeting, maybe it was four back then, now it's three.
Yeah. We were having real issues. Yeah, I mean, that's like.
Yep.
That's a big.
Yep.
Okay. But we have seen an uptick in volunteers for other boards, so, we have not put out a call to the planning board yet, so. We will, we'll have to.
We're thankful for you two. Really, you're, you're still very interested, we appreciate you doing that.
Well, they recruited us at town meeting that year, didn't they?
You and I started, ten, fifteen years ago.
Yeah, and I mean, so recruiting a town meeting's not gonna hurt either, but if you can sit in the chair position a little bit, that might be.
I mean, I would've preferred to have been on the board longer, um, sometimes that is what it is. Um, I, I don't like to be presented with questions I don't know.
Yeah, well, that, well, what you do is you defer.
Yeah.
You know, you, you, you just do a lot, you're gonna do a lot of deferring for a while, so.
Well, Kevin, I'm just curious.
John Krebs, John Krebs attends a lot of meetings, whether it's any sort of progress.
Oh, and, and he's excellent.
I mean, he understands the protocol, and that's, that's your main concern, the protocol, and how, you know, form, and how it's held, and whatnot, but, I mean, that can be learned.
What is your, what is your hesitation, I'm just curious?
Um, I am just not interested at this point, I have other things going on.
Do you wanna stay on the board?
I would, I would, I would, I would, I would be open to discuss that.
Okay. Vice chair?
I'm just really not interested.
Well, he'll be, he's vice chair right now, unofficially. So, um, so, okay, uh, we'll touch on that subject, communications. Uh, let's see, we have, we asked, we did. How's that going?
Haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard a dime thing about it, well, recently, I was approached at the dump by a, a butter to Paul's, what, that's what we're talking about, right?
Oh, no, no. I thought you were talking about, about the proposed project that was put on hold until April.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, oh, yeah, we gotta talk about, we gotta talk about that too, and we're talking about Paul's first. So, um, we got, I, I was approached at the dump by a, a butter to Paul's Automotive, and said, hey, those vehicles are staying there, they've been there for quite a while. And I kind of went over there, looked around, and, yeah, looked like, I looked, the, the one that they said, yeah, the thing was uninspected, this thing was unregistered. As per, you know, our, our things, that's illegal, and we passed on it on the site. Uh, so I kind of forwarded it off to my selectmen, who forwarded it off to Caroline, and they kinda said, we're, we're following the law. You know, we're, we're doing what we're supposed to do, we're, we're being.
We're following up with Mr. Miller.
Yeah, so I guess you went over and you noticed, and then you found out, hey, that's an unregistered vehicle, an unregistered, unscheduled.
It's got an inspection sticker that has one month, and an registration sticker that has another month.
Yes, yeah, and both are, both are two thousand sixteen.
Both are two thousand sixteen.
So we have also had, held public hearing to remove the requirement of offense, which is, and Mr. Miller presented himself and worked along with that. I mean, no one to this point has commented on the snowmobiles, and I understand that was specifically noted in an approval as a.
And, and showed up, and then it, they went away, and it disappeared.
They, they were also part of the same group.
Yeah.
We, we.
Yes, and all of them.
In this black truck.
The black truck.
This Ford Ranger.
Yeah.
Sitting over there for months.
Yeah. So, I hope that.
We were told, no, it hasn't been there for months. I said, all right, well, fair enough, I'm not gonna call the male lawyer, and, and then I noticed the snow started.
The snow started piling up, and it still hasn't moved, and.
Have you seen the vehicle in the abandoned lot with three tires right in town, that has a, that's, um, remember the trailer that got destroyed on, on South Third Street?
Please tell me there's not a car there.
There's a car that was driven home on the rim, and it looks like the tire came so far apart that it just peeled up the fender. And the plate is expired, and it's down, and the, the rim is all gored with all the grass. But the whole fender is like blown out, and they, you could see where they just drove it up there, where that trailer was.
I hadn't heard about you, thank you for that.
It's on you.
I'll take it home if you take the long way. All the road they're running.
I'll follow you back.
I'll go tomorrow to run a daylight, I think. But there's also one on South Street that we're having towed.
That was also had three wheels on it.
Yeah.
Put them together, you could.
Yeah, a wonderful car, right, we've actually contacted the owner of the vehicle, that doesn't respond, the police now, and the owner of the building does not respond, it's now, um, in the way of snow.
It's the same vehicle.
Um, we also did have a correspondence from Mr. Libway, and. Um, we also did have a correspondence from Mr. Leboy and, uh, Jason, Jason Leboy. And I, I had thought, coming out of that, was that, there was two, there, there was two paths that he had to kind of decide.
Yeah.
One was the town meeting route, and the other path was, you know, the, uh, upgrade the road and create your own front engine, have a good old time.
Right.
Um, well, then this nasty, this email comes along.
Well, there's another step you're forgetting, he came, Mr. Conley came to before us.
Right.
And asked for an extension.
Yeah.
And said, you know, can we wait until April or May that I'm gonna be in Florida? You know, and we said, of course, right?
Yeah.
Fair enough, do it late, and then.
And then, then we got this, another email tran- change, this time from Jason, kind of saying how we've been, you know, run, running them around.
Yeah.
That, uh, no.
But the one point.
And he was saying, well, 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 the other, the, the other thing was, was that, you know, it's like, you'll be talking to my lawyer, and I said.
So he said he's now, he said, well, Mr. Conley, great representation, didn't respond, and he said, well, I've no longer paid Mr. Conley, so I never hired him.
Yeah, yeah.
He's done, he hasn't hired, he hasn't hired him again, and that he's now decided to take on legal counsel.
But isn't my understanding that we've, we've been proposed two different plans of access, this one, and he's been.
He's been.
And one on a class six road, so.
What is your question to us?
Here's the issue, is that we've, we have laid out to him what, what, what he can do, okay? Um, we can't decide for him. He's gotta make a decision as to which direction he goes and go with it, and, you know.
Bring it to us.
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying.
And I, I don't understand why.
He hasn't made any formal application or even pursued any specific path, he's proposed two different plans, how can we make a decision or be against his plans if we don't have?
So here, here was the actual email, okay? Uh, let's see, uh, to all, and this was to myself, uh, let's see, Bill Shaheen, Tom Clark.
Bill is a attorney.
Yeah, John Krebs, the select board, Paul Conley, and Suzanne. To all, I cannot afford to continue to pay Paul for Hans's, he can't answer, okay? The town has wrought wrongs for descending on a rat race and creating my family a major hardship. We have, we have spent over fourteen thousand dollars on a simple subdivision. The town is facing all decis- uh, decisions on residence input and block facts, okay? I have been to many select board meetings and, as well as planning board meetings, and again, no capitalized, facts are discussed. I have read these, I've read over and over the state laws, I have come to the decision to hire an attorney to represent me moving forward. You will hear from him soon, I think Jason Leboy.
Oh.
So. That's kind of like where it's at, but.
We still have an application of, before.
Yes, yes, we do have an application, yeah, actually, we do, because I know that the application is gonna change, but I was trying to avoid his cost.
Right.
Of having to do a full-blown re-app.
Right.
And all we had to do was just do the re-notice by.
We continued it, though.
We continued, we continued, so.
I, how are we hesitant?
I have no idea.
So I think, so that we're still operating in good faith.
Yeah.
Wait until the end of the extension is over, and then if he doesn't wanna come back, then we have to deny, because it doesn't meet the requirements.
Yeah.
It's, it's prohibited use, um, on a class six.
Well, you know, here, here's, here's his issue, was, uh, if he goes the town meeting route, okay? He's gotta go to town meeting, okay? That has to pass, and he still, he still has to go to the ZBA, I believe, and that has to pass there, and then it has to come to the planning board. That's three, that, that, that's three times that you can sit down and have it fall flat on his face.
That's true.
All right? If he goes, if he goes the town meeting route, he's just shut himself right down, because there, how could the planning board act favorably on, on the application? You know, I don't see how they could.
I don't believe he has, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so. Anything else?
Situation there. Was there another correspondence you were talking about?
No, I think there was two.
Just Paul's and the minutes?
Minutes.
Uh.
You sent them all, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented, okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Any further business, anything else we wanna discuss?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Just being late today, can we discuss any potential amendments today for the town meeting?
We're done, the one thing that we were voting on when you walked in on, on allowing residential uses in the mail.
Okay. Was there any discussion about, from last, prior meeting about?
We talked, we talked about that, and that's been, uh, been kicked down the, the can, can has been kicked down the road, we'll let you guys next year deal with it. Because you guys gotta think, you, you guys need to think about that a bit, if that's a fairly radical change.
I see.
So, I think that's the general, the general consensus at that one time, if you wanna bring it up again, we can, I think, in the realm of that.
Well, I'm saying it was discussed today, I've agreed with you last night.
Yeah. I think there, that there are pluses and minuses to it, you know, I think it needs to be done now.
What are, what are other small communities, like, I don't know, what do they, what do, what do they do? I'm just curious, like, on, on duplex, like, I honestly don't know. That would be.
John would, would be the first to ask that, he's, he did tell us in the past.
He knows.
Certain areas are very restrictive, like East or due to planning for North Hampton, what do they have, like, panic or lots, like ridiculous like that? I mean, that's the extreme that I don't want to go to.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, there should be some sort of protective restriction to the planning board.
You can look online, like, most towns have their zoning ordinances on.
We're gonna have ours online eventually too.
Who's fault is that?
Pat Matlin.
We'll have them by the, the, but we'll have the revised, um.
Oh, I know, I revised them all, I'm just waiting for.
Ready to be, uh, found and directed for order.
Keep in mind, your goal is to encourage someone to step up and take this role, and get these emails, where you.
Oh!
You know?
See, I would just reply to that and say, talk to our town attorney.